Welcome back to the WSU Democrats Podcast. I am the president of the organization, Ethan Bishop.
I'm Vaughn, I'm the vice president.
And today we're joined by a very special guest, city councilman-elect Kevin Lundell. Very great to have you here. Thanks for coming on.
Thanks for having me.
Right, so first off, congratulations on your win. How are you feeling now that the dust has settled and now that you've had a moment to breathe hopefully?
Yeah, so I'm feeling good, right? I mean, we had an incredible election day, not just here in Ogden, but for progressives across the country. I think we finally had some reason for hope. And I think that was felt from New York City to California and in particular here in Ogden.
For people who might be hearing you for the first time, what inspired you to run for city council in the first place? Was there a moment where you thought, okay, I need to step up?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I'd been involved with local politics for a while, just following along, making my voice heard on issues that needed to be heard. But there was one in particular, and it was when Weber Housing Authority had this project that was going to happen. It was around the corner from my house on about 23rd and Madison. And they had this plan to house 25 homeless disabled adults in what's called permanent supportive housing. So they were going to have 24/7 case management onsite. They had secured over $5 million worth of funding that was going to come to help house these people for at least 10 years that they had in this project. And they only needed the city council's approval for this project to go forward. And ultimately, the council ended up rejecting it, even though they weren't asking for money. And myself and a few other community members, we rallied our community and we got a bunch of people, over 100 people to show up to city council meeting, to show up to an open house that we held at the facility. And so this had neighborhood support and the city council still rejected it. So ultimately, they spent $2.2 million to purchase that facility. It just got torn down yesterday. As a matter of fact, I went by the facility today and it truly broke my heart to see, you know, the very foundation of that building being picked up and put in a dump truck to go away was sort of a metaphor for what happened to people who are unhoused in our community that could have lived there.
Yeah, and and with the unhoused, especially with dealing with the communities and that are disabled. You know, I work with individuals with disabilities for a living and, you know, that issue, you know, strikes home with me. I just couldn't imagine trying to take that away from, you know, you know, veterans, people who served our country, people who, you know, you know, fought against, you know, terrible things and put their life on the line, you know, just to come back and be treated like this by the Ogden City Council, you know, not going through with the project. Do you have any idea what their motive was for that?
I've asked myself that a lot and I can't quite come up with the definite reason, you know. I've talked to a lot of the council members at the time. I went out and tried to persuade many of them and ultimately it was, you know, there was talk of that it might concentrate poverty in the area. I think the area is a very up and coming. It's my neighborhood that I live in. I think we could have very much sustained and supported the project. I think there was there was talk of property taxes that will benefit when they build seven single-family homes there that, you know, most Ogdenites won't be able to afford. There'll be market rate housing there. And so that was the the talk in the background. I didn't I didn't find any of it persuasive enough, but ultimately, we were one vote short on the project. And I just thought to myself, man, if I could be that one vote for some future project, then I had to try.
Exactly. And now we don't only have you there, we also have Flor and Alicia, you know, so now we don't only have one on the city council, we have three, you know, who can now, you know, you know, or three, you know, Democratic-leaning members who, you know, can support these communities and actually say yes to these projects. And that's one of the most, you know, terrible things about a lot of the Republican Party and a lot of their policies is this is what Obama said is that they're the party of no. Because once they regained Congress, you know, after he won, you know, they literally let him do nothing. They stonewalled his entire agenda. They didn't even let him see a Supreme Court justice after Neil, after Justice Scalia died. So it's just, I hate to see when that happens and I love to see people who are saying, yes, we want to do this. Yes, we want to make these policies real. And I think honestly, we saw that, you know, in the same in the same election day with Zoran Mandani, with how much, you know, all the policies that he supports and how people just believed in him. And how people don't want someone who's just going to tell them what they can't do anymore. We want people to say yes and what they can do.
Yeah, and I think that that played itself out here locally in Ogden too. I think you heard a lot about why why we can't do this, that, or the other. And the insurgent candidates came and said, hey, well, let's try something new. And I think that resonated a bit.
Do you have any questions before we move on?
I was just gonna say, I know you kind of already talked about it, but you said that they tore that building down. So is it, is it going to go to individual housing, do you know? I mean, you said you weren't sure, but.
They they have basically two plans. One is a is seven single-family homes. The other is like a townhome, like duplexes that'll be like 12 or 13 if they decide to make it a little bit more dense. Either way, it's it's going to be market rate, market rate housing.
Yeah.
And so, you know, we know what the housing market's like right now. We do need housing, both market rate and affordable housing. But we can do both and, right? And and we can take care of our homeless and house them and we can find places to do projects like they're going to do there. We can find other places to do affordable housing as well. And and we need to be working and being smart and doing both at the same time.
Exactly. So a lot of young voters tuned in to this election cycle. What was your experience like engaging with younger residents and what issues came up most in those conversations?
Yeah, I mean, I think we had a bit of an innovative approach in that we we really utilized social media more than any other campaign and anybody that had in in recent history. And I think that is how we reached younger voters. I think that showed in the turnout numbers. And to answer your question directly, I think younger voters are concerned about affordability, right? I mean, myself, I am super fortunate because I bought my home in 2018. I could not afford the home that I live in now. I could not get that mortgage. And so whether it's housing, whether it's your groceries, whether it's your college tuition, I think that is across the board, what young people are concerned about. And and we tried our best to speak into that.
Exactly. Affordability truly is, you know, the big thing. And honestly, I think that's benefiting Democrats so much because they see the economy and what's happened and they associate that with Trump. And they associate Trump with really any other Republican. And and it just goes to show that now we have actually a groundswell of support for progressive policies. And I think it's just such a great thing. And I think we need to ride that and deliver once we are in office so that we don't have another situation like in 2024, when the Democrats were up and they were like, well, things are expensive. You haven't really materially benefited my life. And, you know, and the economy is a hard thing, but, you know, that's kind of what makes me want to ask, what do you think the Ogden City Council can do? Maybe a few things directly that you think could actually make a tangible difference in the lives of Ogdenites and make their lives a little bit easier on the side of affordability?
Yeah, so I think we all, when I was out on the campaign trail knocking doors, I felt a lot of people talking about the pressures of the growth, right? But what they haven't felt is the benefit from the growth, right? We've had this huge increase in our tax base because of that growth, over $100 million increase over the last 10 years. And but what what have we tangibly felt for that, right? A, we've got a water bill that increased by 25% last year. That's what it's going to be 5% over the next five years. And also, what like what amenities do we feel and use on our day-to-day basis that that we didn't have 10 years ago, you know? And so I think there's a few things. One, I think we we need to shift paths in that we can need to make sure that we're using our tax base and our dollars to serve the community. That's that's better parks, that's better, you know, upgrading our our iconic pool, the Lorne Far Pool. And instead of giving those dollars away to corporate developers, which we have done in the past, you know, Ogden, that Wonder Block project is subsidized to the tune of $117 million of taxpayer money. That's $5.6 million annually just to service the debt on that, on that project between the the direct subsidies and the parking garage that is is there. So, you know, that change of direction, I think people could really feel and benefit from on a day-to-day basis. If we've got a nice park, you don't have to take your kid to the trampoline park. I know, I know that's not that not necessarily necessarily something you two are that concerned about, but I think a lot of families in Ogden are. And I think even even beyond that, making a city that's more functional, more workable, public transport, I think the connections here with OGX to downtown have benefited college students. And I think we can can continue to increase things like that.
Awesome. I'm glad to hear you say that with walkable cities because that's something I really want to do. For the longest time, I didn't drive because I had some medical issues back in 2021 and I didn't, I I just knew that you could get into an accident when you drive, so I just did not want to do it for the longest time. It was only when I was 20 that I finally got my license. And even then, you know, there's still times where it's just like, it's not good, you know, I don't like that when I go over to go past Jamba Juice to go up to the D Event Center, that I have to pretty much always wait until the light turns yellow and hope that someone stops so then I can go in the middle of the intersection. And that's just what we do. It's just, it's completely unsafe. And I love to hear stuff like that, but.
Yeah, I mean, you're talking about an accessibility thing, right? Like not, a lot of us take for granted the fact that we can't drive. And thanks for bringing that up and sharing that with us because there's a lot of folks who can't. I met people on the last days, on the Saturday before the election, I met two people that could not drive, that had not filled out their ballot yet, but couldn't put it in the mail because of the new law change that you have to, the ballot has to be received by that day. So, you know, there are things like that that make it difficult if you if you can't drive. And so, yeah, we need to do do better at at making our city accessible.
Awesome. Do you have any more questions for me?
Yeah, I'll jump in here. So you mentioned, you know, public transportation and you said, you know, walking around the city is nice. So I'm from, I'm from Oregon, from Salem, Oregon, and I grew up there my whole life. And I didn't realize how well-lit everything was at night. And I came here and everything is just so dark, you know, as soon as the sun sets, it's just pitch black. Like, I wanted to bring up specifically on 40th Street, if you're coming on Riverdale and you take a right onto 40th Street to go up to Harrison Boulevard. It's a, it's a one-way and it kind of loops around through a neighborhood. And there are zero streetlights for quite a long ways. And it's just pitch dark. Like you, you, I feel like the people that live there have to get out their flashlights just to get to their door. And you brought up lighting and it really made me think of how dark it is here. So what, what steps do you plan to tackle that problem? And also, how do you plan to fund that?
Yeah, I mean, streetlights were something we talked about right from the get-go. We, I really liked to talk about the Aspen House and the $2.2 million that was spent there in the names of quality neighborhoods and how the streetlights in that neighborhood were so dark. I mean, I walked my dog down there when it was dark at night and, you know, a 42-year-old guy with his, you know, 50-pound dog, and I still felt a little unsafe at times just because of the darkness, not because I of the of the neighborhood, but just because it's so dark, you know? And Ogden has this really unique situation where the power company owns a chunk of the lights and the city owns a chunk of the lights. And so you've got to work with the power company and control them to get them to fix the lights. But we've got it, we have some authority, we have some power. We need to do, just do better at solving the problem. Like, I heard that in the debate, right? When there was like, well, we don't own the lights, we can't fix the lights. It's like, we don't want to hear why you can't, like, let's get to work and get it done, right? And and so I think we can, I, there's just, there has to be a way, right? We can, we can get it done. And and I think we got to get to work and roll up our sleeves and and figure it out because, to your point, it is a problem.
Yeah, just aggressively, you know, trying to get these progressive policy ideals done, not just saying, oh, you know, we don't, well, saying we don't have that authority, like, obviously, you're going to act within the confines of the law, but you're still going to push and try to get change really any way you can, as long as it's a legal avenue and as long as, you know, and it's free and democratic, basically. And if it has public support, that just makes it even more justified, in my opinion.
I mean, I, you're 100% right. And, you know, I think that's what got people a little bit more excited about this campaign was like, what are the possibilities? You know, and I'd love to talk about those election results and 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 how we got there and anything like that.
What would you like to say about that? I mean, what kind of surprised you about the results? Did you expect to win? Did you, because honestly, I'm kind of used to just seeing all of my candidates losing, honestly. Like, I supported, you know, I'm not going to say all the candidates that lost, but yeah, I supported all these people. And then I'm just like, oh, dang it. Even if they lose by a little bit, I'm like, of course they lost. But then you, you know, you win by what, over 60% of the vote? You know, and same could be said, you know, impressive victories for some of the other, you know, Dem-leaning candidates. So, you know, what did you think about that, you know, and this whole thing going into the election and on election day, did you actually think you were going to win? And what was your reaction?
I, I did think I was going to win. I had no idea I was going to win by that margin, you know, I, and the only reason why I felt confident that I was going to win was, I mean, we had that primary result, which was really strong. I just didn't see any changes in the electorate that were going to lead me to think that we were going to lose that lead after the primary. But the story of the election is the turnout. You know, my opponent, he, he only got 143 fewer votes than he got four years ago when he won. And he lost by over 2,300 votes. So so that is the 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 size of the turnout. We had a 31% increase in turnout across the city from four years ago. In District One, where Flor Lopez was running, we had a 56% increase in District One, which is more of that East Central District. They understood the assignment. They understood what were they, you know, that was the most important race in this whole cycle was because of who her opponent was, how far, far right he was and where she was. That race was really important. And District One understood the assignment and and really showed up.
I voted for her. She's awesome.
Yes.
And honestly, one, the only other reason why it kind of surprised me that you won is I kind of, and I didn't realize this until I canvassed for Rosemary back in 2024, is I expect especially with municipal elections where there's not a D next to your name, there's not an R next to your name, that people might not really care or vote, or they'll just vote for the incumbent, or they'll not really think of it like, oh, there's a Republican, there's a Democrat. But then I think, you know, with canvassing and how you guys can use all this data to target voters, it's like, you guys know who to target and how to let them know who you are and that. And it's so it's when it comes up on the ballot, it's not just some blank name that you don't know. And they can actually put some policy behind it. I just find that so interesting. Do you have anything to say about kind of that kind of process or how you guys kind of reach voters in that way?
I, I really do. And the interesting thing is, is yes, do we target voters? Yes. When I'm out knocking doors, like, I'm only knocking on doors of people who voted two years ago in the municipal elections. Like, that's what I'm doing. But I don't think that's necessarily the story of how we got to where we got. I think we decided early on that we were going to run a completely different campaign. You know, we, when you first sign up, decide you're going to run for office, you file, all of a sudden, you get a bunch of people who want to either want you to hire them to run your campaign or people who have done this for a while and want to give you advice. And when you're early in the campaign, you go and you meet with all of them, right? And I met with this, this, it was a supporter of mine who set up this meeting with this guy who was, who has worked in Republican politics at the highest levels in the state. And we got together and he was, you know, giving me all this advice. He said, well, you can probably win with that beard of yours, but you can't win with that mustache. Because that mustache, what it says is that social norms don't apply to you. And so nobody will vote for you. And I was just like, well, I'm not going to take that advice because the death nail to any politician is inauthenticity, right? Like, so if I'm wearing this thing for the last four or five years and all of a sudden, oh, I'm signed up for election and clean shave Kevin, shaving Kevin comes out, then I'm like, this guy, you know, why, why would I show up for him, right? He said, well, you can't, you can't make the, you can't make the mirror angry, like, too late. The Aspen House did that in, right? Like, they, they weren't, the establishment was not happy with me. You can't make the bureaucrats mad, too late, we, you know? And and so basically, everything he told us to do, we were doing the opposite. And in, and, you know, there was case after case of that where we decided, hey, you know what, we're not going to hire any campaign firm to run this thing. We have an idea. We want to show that that we're going to, we're going to test that idea for better or worse, that we're going to show up who we are and and we're going to put that forward, right? I can't tell you, you know, when I went and tabled at Ogden Pride, you know, how many people thought that was a terrible idea? You know, and I was like, no, this is who I am. I've got a pride flag out in front of my house, you know, like, this is who I am. I'm going to show up that way. Right when, at our campaign kickoff, at our launch event, we talked about immigration, we talked about DEI. You know, we, we launched and we with who we were. And we didn't, we didn't shy away from that. And I think that made people excited. And you combine that with the fact that Alicia was there, ready, and people were excited about her, you know, Flor came in to the race, people were excited about her. And all of a sudden, we had some momentum in a way that people really were like, yeah, I actually am going to show up this time to municipal race, even though I've never voted in a municipal race. I'm, I'm excited about it. I'm going to show up, I'm going to vote. And and that's what happened. That was the story of of the election cycle was that, you know, we turned out people that had never voted in that kind of race before and to, in a large number.
Yeah, and I think you're so right about the inauthenticity is what kills campaigns. Honestly, I think that's kind of what killed Kamala Harris's campaign, to be honest with you. Or that's one of the things, I think affordability at the time was. And then affordability is one of the reasons why you and all the other Democrats had a good night the other Tuesday. But, you know, I was just kind of questioning or kind of curious about with, you know, when you're getting this advice or when a lot of these politicians, or, yeah, when a lot of these politicians are getting advice, is a lot of it coming from they genuinely think that? Or is some of it coming from just corporate interests and the kind of the way things have been and just a respect of the establishment? And because beyond just, you know, oh, you can't keep your beard, it's like, obviously, that's bullshit. It is, it's like, but I think also, I think what could be even more terrifying is when politicians have really good ideas and they're very progressive. And then they do, like what you said, they sit down with all these people and it just whittles away all of their progressive ideals and then they just kind of shell of their former self.
And I've seen that over and over again.
Yeah.
You know, yeah, you're, you're spot on with that, that it happens. I think, look, these, these campaign consultants, it is their job to try to win. I think they genuinely believe that. And but we've just seen it not work time and time again. And I have to give the credit to my campaign manager, Carrie Harbath, who had never run a political campaign before, but she understands social media. She is a self-made social media guru. She is a mom to a, to a disabled child and she just cares deeply. And my friend Dan Martinez, who has just very clear-eyed vision of a lot of the things we're talking about here today and and affordability. And they would just, I'd come back from these meetings and I, and they would not let me get whittled away. And but for them and and us really being, being true to ourselves and them saying, and and being back in my ear after those kinds of meetings and say, Kevin, look, we had a plan all along from the beginning. We, we, this is what we were going to do. And you're not going to run a center-right campaign because some guy told you to because he used to work, you know, up on the hill, right? Like, we're just, that, that's not how we're going to do it. And I was so lucky to have people like that in my corner keeping me true. I always, I knew I wanted to do that, but it does. Even the best people get whittled away by these, these, these groups and these interests who, I, I think most of them actually have what they think is the best interest of the candidates. But they've done it that way for so long, I just don't think they know how to do it any different than trying to find some middle-of-the-road magical voter that's out there that doesn't, I don't think really exists, right? And and so we decided we're going to do something different and we did.
Awesome. Do you have any more questions before I go with the last questions?
Yeah, so mine's kind of at the end too, but your term is set to end in 2029. Seems like a long ways away from now. But at the end of your term, can you paint a picture for us of what your ideal Ogden looks like and how it runs?
Wow, I love that question. I think when I, I think of an Ogden four years from now, while that seems like a long ways away, I think in terms of government shifting and moving, it is, it is short. But I think we should feel the impact of this election. You know, this was a mandate type of election, a 60-40 mandate, 2,300 votes. And and I think we should feel that. I think we should feel that in our, the way we see improvements in our parks, the way we see how we lead with empathy when it comes to our our unhoused population, the way we see voices standing up for our immigrant population and how we as a city respond to that. I think we're dealing with that right now. And so I think we see forward steps in housing that that makes life more affordable there. And and just, we, we feel the impact of a city that invests in its people. That's what I, in four years from now, that's what I want the person to say. What was the effect of Kevin? Well, I felt it. I felt my tax dollars at work, you know, whether that's when I go to the park or whether I, when I go to try to pay for rent.
Good point. So two questions left. Campaigns can be brutal sometimes. What's something about this race that surprised you, either in a good way or in a wow, I did not expect that way?
They can be brutal. And it was. It, it surprised me how much the campaign occupied my headspace. Like, it was always there, always on me. I didn't, I didn't sleep past 5:30 in the morning, ever. Because I would wake up and immediately my head would be going on, you know, how we were going to message and what we, what was the next step and how we were going to perform in that debate, what questions were going to be asked. And so it was always there. It's, it's kind of, I, I hadn't had that feeling since I was in chiropractic college, to be honest. That feeling of a deadline, you know, it's finals week and you always feel like you can be doing more. My goodness, that was on top of me. So that's definitely one. The other is just some of the wild, you know, sort of insider stuff that would get thrown your way, you know, that was like, Kevin is, you know, the, the, the the case against Kevin was always that like, oh, man, he's such a, he, he's just so mean and he, he's, he's never going to be able to work with the other council members. And, you know, I just thought that was pretty funny in ways because it just didn't match my personality, who, like, really, I give people the benefit of the doubt. I am passionate about the issues I'm passionate about. I'm not afraid to use my voice. But boy, am I super eager to sit down across from someone. Some of the, I, I have to tell the last story because it kind of fits in with this question as well, which was after the election. There is, there was a former state representative, he goes on Facebook and he posts about how there was this influx of Democratic money that flowed into the campaigns in Ogden. And there was these Democratic operatives working in the background to make sure these campaigns had all this high-quality video on social media. You, you laugh, right? Because you know what the Democratic Party.
That's a compliment to Carrie then.
It is, right? It really was a five-star review of the campaign. But you, you guys all laughed because you're like, man, wait, we, we work inside the Democratic politics, like, the Democratic Party in Weber County and Utah is not very organized and they don't have a history of, of doing this super well, right? And so it was funny to respond to that and just be like, hey, look, this was just me. Like, those videos you saw were shot by my iPhone in my office that was propped up behind over two books. You know, later on in the campaign, I invested in a tripod, you know, that was pretty awesome. But, you know, I really want that narrative to be dispelled, particularly because I posted about that. I just, you know, I posted a picture of me, Carrie and Dan. And then he blocked me. This is a former state representative, right? Blocked me, so my, my post went away. So no one can see that. So they can still read this. All of his followers are still reading this and thinking there's some influx of Democratic money and Democratic operatives running this campaign, when really it was just me, Carrie and Dan back there, right? And so it was, it was really funny. And so I think some of that surprised me when going back to your original question, this, these weird dynamics that are really small. I think we, we learned that later in the campaign. It was like, these insider conversations are so small. And when you zoom out, people on the north end of town where I was knocking doors, they didn't know any, they didn't have no idea all this insider stuff that was going on. And so we just kept speaking to them. We kept knocking on their doors and kept having those one-on-one conversations.
I think that probably goes back to January 6th of 2021 where the message was kind of put into people's heads that you either won or if you lost, the other person cheated. So I think that's, could be where that comes from. And I'm glad you're able to just kind of take that and shrink it down to, you know, how small it really is pushed aside.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we tried to do all along, you know, yeah, zoom out and 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 look at the big picture and realize that that this insider stuff is just insider stuff. And that, that was the, that was the crux of the whole campaign. It was like, let's, let's get bigger. Let's think bigger, you know?
And I hope that honestly, and I think you've already set the example. And in many ways, many people on Tuesday who got elected have set this example that, you know, you're showing. And I hope that they follow in your footsteps and, you know, are true to themselves and actually don't care about this internal, you know, fighting or they don't care about, you know, what these policy advisors or whoever is telling them. And they actually stay true to themselves. But before we let you go, is there anything you want to say directly to the people? But before we let you go, is there anything you want to say directly to the people who supported you, especially young voters, as you get ready to take office?
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you for turning out to the type of election that you've, you really haven't turned out to before. Uh, it's, it's really, really meaningful that whatever we said and however we approached it, I, I think one of the things we learned was that vibes on the ground in a campaign matter so much. And that, that it sounds sort of weird in a, in a, you know, politics and you go into these different campaigns, they, they are get very into the minutia of it. And that minutia matters when you're talking about a race that's, that on a presidential level is just, you're, there's these narrow swing voters and you're trying to reach them. It really matters. But you can knock on all the doors you want. If there's not an underlying tone of, of, of excitement, then, then it doesn't, it won't matter. It won't translate to the votes. So thank you for uh, resonating with me. And um, I hope to be able to continue that throughout my service on the council. It's one of the promises I've made is that I'm not going to just do the campaigning thing on social media and then go away. But I want to engage with our uh, community members through there. I want to bring the issues back to you. And um, you know, and, and guess what? I, I, you're gonna, I'm gonna do something. I'm gonna have a vote. You're not gonna agree with me. I, but we're gonna get to have that dialogue along the way. Um, and you know, we'll get to kind of explore that together in a way that I hope is more open, a way that uh, continues to bring you in, even if we don't a- agree on some issue in the future. Uh, but that you can know that I'm, I'm, I'm out there, I'm accessible and that I will explain why, um, which we uh, don't get very often.
Awesome. Yeah. I can't wait to see those updates. That'll be very beneficial to the WSC Democrats podcast, cause then we'll actually have a good, un, well, unbiased, I guess, democratic, you know, perspective on it. Uh, unbiased, uh, reasonably unbiased, I would say. Um, but yeah, thank you so much for coming on.
Thank you. I seriously appreciate it. Uh, and keep up the good work here. Uh, you know, the work with uh, the university here and the work you can do to engage these type of voters, right? The voters that, you know, might have turned out in 24. Um, but uh, they're, you know, rightfully so. You're buried in your studies. Who has time to look into the, the city council guy that's, that's running, but has some effect on, on your living and, and the affordability right here in the city that you're living to and living in and going to school at? So um, I think you've got some good um, traction and keep it up.
Yeah. Now we're gonna kidnap you to force Carrie to do all of our podcast stuff and all of our social media.
Hey, there we go. There we go. Carrie, she's listening.
Awesome. Well, thanks so much.
Okay. Have a good one.